So, um, so first item will approval of the minutes from the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Did anyone have anything that they noted?
Not the threat from that, I mean, just little dippy stuff like a, like a B instead of an A. As long as it makes, as long as the sentence is.
It makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, that's something on page four. Open the, the, the top paragraph there, it uses the word height. And I think the word is, um. Yeah. Me, we read, it reads incorrectly with the word height there.
So that was on page four?
On four, the first paragraph there, the.
Page four, yeah.
Come out the stands.
For the fourth sentence down.
Yeah, so then they have made changes to stairs.
Oh, hi, yeah, okay, see it now.
So that should be depth, because width is thirty feet.
I don't remember, so I'd have to go back and listen to.
Well, yes.
It was new.
There wasn't, there wasn't hide, so.
Yeah.
Existing.
Because it's, so it wouldn't encroach more than three feet, is that what you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody else see anything?
You wanna wanna make a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
With the change that Neil.
With the change of the word height, the depth for the minutes on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
And Kitty seconded, uh. Okay. So, new business, agenda item A, um, we'll have Tony come up.
We're the chairman chair, members of planning board, um. Summarize what we've done and looked at in February and March. In response to a request from the Board of Alderman, the ad hoc committee was created to focus on building setbacks applicable to residential structures in the R one and R two residential zoning districts. The ad hoc committee met six times to consider the issues presented on October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and review the finalizer's report to the Board of Alderman. This agenda item was heard in our February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three planning board meetings. At the March planning board meeting, the text amendments to one fifty-five, two-ten, open space was forwarded to the Board of Alderman in consideration after April meeting. Um, the Board of Alderman at that March fifteenth meeting decided to pull the agenda item and, um, bring it back on the consent agenda and directed the ad hoc committee to meet again on this item. So the ad hoc committee did meet again, met four more times to discuss the open space ordinance and made some additional changes to it. Uh, this memo provides to the planning board, uh, with the historical background of open space current ordinances and the overview of the proposed amendments to one fifty-five, two-ten. And to give you some background, you know, sometimes these ordinance evolve over time, tax amendments. And I just put in there, nineteen seventy-two, you, you could do some open stairways and things like that from seventy to two thousand and twenty-two. There were, where was changes made? And as I was discussing today with Neil, some of those were, at one time, there was no mention of HVAC stands, LP gas tanks and things like that, until John Wessel started getting involved, said, if we're gonna permit them, let's put them in our order, so we did. Uh, this is consistent with our, this text amendment is consistent with our, uh, statement of consistency, consistency with Camelann use plan. And again, at our February seven, seventh meeting, we did discuss this, uh, open space tax amendment. We discussed it again in our March meeting, if you go to page twelve, I made some comments on what the planning board did discuss at that meeting. Number one, A through D, there were no changes made to that. Uh, the planning board did mention to delete section E, and that's with these showers. And new section E utility service equipment stand shall be constructed adjacent to the house and does not include the access to the roof of the house. We did put something new in there, and I'll go over that to address that. Uh, delete the entire section of floor, outdoor shower, A through D. Section five, add exterior vertical outdoor platform lift, add this in the section, that no lifts for new construction, only for existing buildings. We did that, the ad hoc committee did come back and do that. Allow lifts or, add lifts or allow them to setbacks if there is no other place to, to lift that adheres to setbacks of the zoning districts. Now, I'll get into that in a minute, we, the ad hoc committee did look at that and we couldn't find, uh, we just couldn't find the language to put that in there. Uh, the town attorney, or the former town attorney, suggested that we didn't put any language like that in there, it's kind of hard to, um, en- enforce that. And then we said section six through sixteen is okay in that ordinance. We did advertise for this meeting in the Star News, and then attachments, we have the open space ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three, eighteen forty-three. We still have the ad hoc committee's report in there, the statement of consistency, and I did include the ad hoc committee's minutes in there. So, I was a part, I wasn't a member of the ad hoc committee, but I was there all the meetings. The ad hoc committee wanted this ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three, eighteen forty-three, as you see on page fourteen, to go to the Board of Alderman. So, tonight, what we'll do is, this ordinance will go to the Board of Alderman, but you're welcome to look at this, the planning board is, is welcome, look at, make any changes that you wanna do, so, so it's not uncommon to have two recommendations to go to the, the Board of Alderman, if you choose to do that. This ordinance here, and then if you still wanna make changes to this, you still could, if you wanted to strike out some or add some, we could, uh, make those changes. So we could have a recommendation for the planning board and a recommendation from the ad hoc committee. If you got any questions for me, I'd rather answer.
But Tony, isn't that what we did in March?
Well, we, we did make some, yeah, you did, the question is, is since the Board of Alderman directed ad hoc committee to meet again, they did address it. So now it's coming back to you again, and if you wanna make some of those same changes, you can. Um, and we did make some changes to that, the planning board wanted to make though there, but not all of them. And we did discuss them, we just, uh, we discussed them at least four more times, and, uh, this was the final outcome right here.
So it appears the showers and the arbers are still.
Yes.
In here.
Exactly, number, in other words, number four on page fifteen, that is still in there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did make some adjustments to it, but at the planning board, um, but most of the members wanted to strike out number four completely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we did make some other changes, so that would be the, you know, the major thing is probably the showers there, I'm guessing.
And the eyebrows relating to the fence.
Right.
Not just sitting in the middle of the yard.
Yeah, we just, I think we.
Cause she wasn't here when we talked.
Right, so we've got it directed at into just like of a gate, not anything else bigger.
Got it.
I would like to, uh, just provide some input from the ad hoc committee as to the deliberations that we had following the last, um, planning review. And also tie it together with a few of the things Tony just said. So we, we did take it and we looked at each item, and we realized, uh, very early in the discussions, as we found ourselves challenging what we had put forward, uh, as a unanimous decision. Well, how did we get it? And we realized that we applied. We, we started out from the process of, well, what's our assignment, our assignment is to look at what we currently have and what was currently out there. And what we found was quite a difference between what the ordinance covered and what we found, uh, in the setbacks of houses up and down the alley. And in that, we, we looked at, well, what's out there and why is it out there, and what does it bring to the, the party? And then we met very early on with the fire chief, because that was one of the key drivers, we wanted to understand about the safety and the setback, first responders, et cetera. And the chief categorically said he did not have a problem with anything that, that he saw and that we discussed as far as the items in the setback. So, we, through the course of then going and, and putting together what you see as the proposal from the ad hoc committee, we thought in terms of, you know, how, how did these things, why did they wind up there? And it came back to, in many cases, quality of life decisions. And so we evaluated things from that point of view of, is this quality of life? And does it violate any feedback that we've gotten from any of the other, uh, you know, departments, and especially the fire chief? And then we went back to the purpose that we had drafted, and we realized that the purpose didn't identify quality of life, so you, you'll see here that we, we requested that that come back in, enhancing the, the community's quality of life. So, jump then to the historic perspective that Tony just shared, uh, from the seventies especially, and, and then building on through the two thousand and twenties, uh, as well as the state of the consistency. Through the process of over years, as, as Tony said, things were being approved, even though they weren't written in the ordinance. Gutters, HVAC stands, gas, um, I'm, I'm not sure of the timeframe of all the other issues that have wound up in, in there. Also, if you think about it, you know, some of the stuff that we talked a lot about, that, that we faced on the development, especially the development that happened over on Pelican, with these long, uh, uh, stands with multiple HVAC and with, you know, generators and, and other things. Those, they back, they all tie back to quality of life aspects. Specifically, generators, well, do people really stay here during a hurricane? No, not necessarily, and, you know, if there's an evacuation, right? But they want their generator to be able to run so it can protect their exotic wood, well, that's a quality of life issue. And that's not the only reason that generates there, but the reality is that these multiple stands, sorry, not the multiple stands, but the multiple units that get up there are, are pretty heavily driven by quality of life decisions. And yet there's lots of houses in our town that are older and the only options they have to kind of be in that same, uh, realm setbacks, because they're not building your house, and unless you build a new house, you're precluded from some of those, those things. Things like an outdoor shower, that's a quality of life issue for many people, many, many people, especially in the beach side of the community, where the purpose for being there is to get to the beach, and the other purpose is to not to bring a sand in the house, whether it is your, your family, your friends, or your renters. So these are not things that are just, uh, in a way, just, just frivolous, and they're not necessarily just an ISO because they just happen to, to, to come to being, but the reality is, they do exist. And then specifically with regard to lifts, felt very strongly that that is a quality of life issue, that is people staying in their home ability to navigate whatever number of floors they need to. And there's, that's a very real issue today, that's not just dreaming forward that we're all gonna get older. Some of us are already there, and there's no other option, we're not gonna rebuild a house so we can put an elevator in, or we're not gonna majorly disrupt our, the, the current floor plan. As Tony said, we tried to think in terms of language or criteria that you would use, and we, 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 we failed to come up with things that we felt were, were complete enough or that we could hang that bell on Tony and say, Tony, here, here's the recipe, here's what you have to do, and then John Wessel, you know, given his, uh, legal experience in the town, said, it's not a path that we should go down. But what we talked about there was an accessibility, uh, criteria, you know, how accessible would the lift be? Like, you know, it comes back to the issue, is are the alternative spaces, uh, that are not in the setback. There may be space that's not in the setback, but it's not accessible for the people that need to, to get to it. The other thing is, it may be a space that's not a setback, but it is so disruptive to being able to actually get up and into the house. You may have to put a door into your house, or you're not gonna come up to the floor and, and totally, you know, change a footprint in, in a bedroom, or in a kitchen, or, you know, whatever it is, so we, we, we gave this, as Tony said, four different meetings to dig through it and try to understand that one specific issue. And it just made sense to us at the end, it's not gonna be that many of them, and it's not gonna be a frivolous purchase, because it is not a cheap purchase, a cheap, cheap purchase, if somebody would make. And I just wanted to characterize the type of discussions we had, come back very strongly to the issue, this is, all of these elements are about quality of life. Absolutely about quality of life, because there were years where this town wasn't based on air conditioning. That's how they, that's not how they built houses, of course, you know, thirty, forty years later, yeah, if you don't have an air conditioner, you know, people are gonna look at you crazy, but those are all quality of life aspects, and so to not use that as a criteria, I think, is, would be a failure of our court. And I would say, the ad hoc committee would feel that's failure. That's all I wanted to say.
Does anybody else have anything? Just open the public portion, or?
Yeah, any questions from me or?
Yeah, anybody?
Um, I do have a quick question, the, in red, those are the changes the ad hoc committee made from our March hearing to the, this, this one?
Yes, and then we left some in there, like the, the showers, the number, the number four outdoor shower was, was completely left, but in red is some of the changes we did.
Okay, okay.
Taken out.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I do have one question for Neil and all of this, and this, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of myself only. I don't think there's anybody here that would disagree with the fact that a lift is definitely a quality of life. We never have, in the very first meeting, I spoke about that, I said, I, I know, and I spoke on behalf of myself, that I'll get older and I may need, but I understood all that, so that to, to, the, the, the lift is, is not an issue with me personally. I do, would like to know, um, how an eight-by-four shower is a quality of life? Cause I was pretty, I felt pretty strongly about that in our March meeting, that I wasn't the only one, but I don't know how that fits into eight-by-four, eight-by-four is bigger than the bathroom I got in my house.
It's up to one, it, it's stated as up to a.
Yeah, and, and people will do eight-by-four, if you tell them they're doing eight-by-four, they're doing it. So that's, that's the only, the statement, I mean, lifts, I'm not even, that's not even in my, I mean, that's an absolute quality of life thing, without a doubt, I said that from the very beginning. But I don't understand eight-by-four shower.
So that's, was that a question?
No, it's just a statement.
Okay.
It's just a statement.
I'd like to respond a little bit, um, first I'll start with lift. And we, like I said, we, we met four more times, and I was opposed to the lift to start with, especially if there was another place you could put it in, again, as Neil said, you know, it's, it's not always the fact that you could put it in another place, doesn't mean that's absolutely the best place for it. But if you see how ugly these things are and how expensive they are, I just don't feel like that we, as the comment, you'll ride down Wayne Drive seeing lifts all on, I just, I don't see that. My neighbor has one, it's, it's very ugly, and, you know, it cost him a lot of money, they had ridden for it, so they're lucky. But I just don't think people are gonna buy lifts to carry their brushers up or hauls.
No, because going to the house, a bad elevator, that was the thing that, if everybody remembered from a March meeting, the reason that second part of our meeting was because the word elevator was used.
And then that word elevator should come out.
We did all that, so I, I have absolutely.
Right.
No. Talking about the, um.
What was I saying?
We're talking about lifts, did you wanna talk about showers or?
You know, yeah, yep, yep, and I, I had one more thing to say.
You were just, you were just saying that.
I forgot.
In the setback, and you, you, right, there's nowhere else.
And I don't think, you know, I think that an elevator is, oh, oh, that it won't be in any new houses.
Yeah.
It's all in a construction.
Yeah, I agree with this.
Okay, so that's to me was a plus, plus the fact that I just don't think you're gonna see that in.
And not in the front yard.
Right, and not in the front yard.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know, I think we, I, I agree, I think we've been past that, and I kind of agree with you to start with the shower. And again, I did a whole lot of listening in this group, and shower, i- you know, if it's not, if it's just, if it doesn't have plumbing and all that, it starts, that house down there with all that long row of palm trees, it's temporary. You can take it out at any time you want to. It's, um, it has an open bottom and an open top, and it's four feet into the setback, the eight feet tall. But again, it's not one of those things that are built in concrete and all that, that, that would, and like I say, we put these walls around these houses with in-concrete, brick walls and everything else, I did, I did not see that, after I listened, I did not see that as something that that was infringing, like, I didn't see it as an addition to the house.
But when you, but reading this, you just said eight feet tall, but reading this is, you said, the, the, this is right, it says eight feet long.
Yeah.
That's a long shower, eight feet is.
It's twice as long.
This is.
And remember that, how long is the stand, thirty feet?
Yeah.
The utility stand, so.
That's, yeah, it's thirty, almost forty feet.
Yeah.
The eight, the eight, the eight-foot measurement came from, uh, actually going and measuring itself, that exists. Um, it's basically set up so that there's a place to shower and a place to step and dry yourself and change.
We spent a lot of time talking about Cheryl outside of the wall, squirting down while you stand there, you know, and, and that kind of thing. But, you know, I, I changed my mind, you know, that I didn't see it as an addition to the house.
I think you started asking a question, Leah, about the quality of life, how is that a quality of life issue? And, uh, I can certainly speak personally to it, I grew up with an outdoor shower, that was enclosed, and my whole family, yes. But when we went on vacation, outdoor showers, um, because you kept the sand outside and you didn't bring it inside. And for renters, um, people who rent their houses, clearly, uh, you know, renters have their own set of behaviors. Uh, the best you can do is hope they use the outside shower, you encourage them to use it, but without that, you know, next thing you know, they have a mess in their house, and, uh, so.
Only thing I wanna say about the quality of life, I think it's a very slippery slope. And what somebody deems as an improvement to their quality of life, somebody else might find it offensive or in, in coaching on their aspect. One example, we got a guy that wants a helicopter landing pad on his roof, that's his quality of life, but that doesn't mean that's what everybody else around him has to deal with. Somebody thinks the swimming pool on the roof of their house is a quality of life. They don't have room in their backyard, are we supposed to allow that? The generators you've talked about were a quality of life thing, and I agree, and I have one. But the, some of them are required by the insurance company, it's not a homeowner's choice, it's required by the insurance companies. If I'm not mistaken for the, is it not, I think they'd said in the previous meeting that somebody in homeowners companies required it because of the type of woods that they put in. I mean, it's, I agree with what you're saying, but we have to be really careful of what our interpretation of the quality of life and what everybody said.
Hey, I don't know, shower, I'm quite.
I would agree. With the swimming pool?
Yeah, offensive in the good word, you don't mean offensive, you mean?
Because.
Intrusive.
Intrusive.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it, it, it encroaches on somebody else's.
Yeah, because when you put a swimming pool on a roof, then you got people out there, then it becomes a rooftop, uh, place to, everybody says, well, how is your quality of life when your neighbors up there, do you?
It will seem that it's comparable to an outdoor shower.
I just, all I'm saying about the outdoor showers, I don't feel that an eight-foot long shower, a four-foot shower stall, which is mostly what's on my show, on my neighborhood.
Well, you live in school thing.
Yeah, and that's fine, too, like, again, I am not talking about the lift.
Yeah, I mean, that's comparable size.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
And you're right.
Eight-by-four, it's plenty of room to get in there and shower all, and you get, and as far as.
We peek out, do you remember?
Uh, part of.
Oh, then we're gonna look at.
Yeah, and the other.
Somebody, well, actually, there's, I don't, I've never seen an eight-by-four, but I haven't looked that close, but I don't, I just don't feel like eight, and I'm gonna stick by my March statements of, of the showers, I, I just don't.
Again, that is the board can do exactly what they wanna do.
Exactly.
The fact that Neil and I on this other committee puts us in it, I mean, we heard a whole lot more that you, that you haven't heard, and that, you know, we spent a whole lot more time, but it's just our opinion.
Right.
So they will look at our report, and they'll look at your, how you feel about it, and then they'll, they'll ju, you know, they'll vote on their own, how they, how they wanna do.
Right.
They like to use the planning, I mean, they'll always like to say, we went with the planning board, but they don't always.
But I felt like that, I just, I don't feel any differently tonight than I did in March, is what I'm saying.
Relative to shower.
Showers and the, I didn't, I didn't think the arbor should be there, but I get it.
You mean for the gay? Arbor gay.
Your point about showers, you, you, you make the statement maybe to just reduce the, uh, the whole.
Well, yeah, because people already have showers, I just, I, people already have showers, especially, so, I mean.
Uh, I'd like, I think I'd like, whenever you all get changed.
Please do, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, and I didn't wanna interrupt, the, you have the, you're talking about quality of life, and obviously that's important. Quality of life changes a lot from the seventies to two thousand and twenties, and we're talking about air conditioners on setbacks. I don't think, um, you would say these days, um, I don't know how many houses on this, we don't have air conditioners, but it's a little bit different when we're talking about quality life and having an air conditioner. I don't have exotic wood in my house, if I had, you know, we get a, a whole house generator, is to make sure that my food doesn't spoil in my refrigerator. It's not a quality life thing, it's so I can plug it and make sure my refrigerator, I was here in Florence, I brought a generator, put it on my porch, plugged it in, my, my food didn't spoil, I'm not worried about that, and again, quality life is different for other people. But to say that a whole house generator is basically for some person who has a lot of money to make sure their, um, their exotic wood doesn't.
That was just an example.
I know, but, but, but I think most people understand that the generator is to make sure that foods.
But seeing what an addition that is from back from the seventy, you know, as much thing as a generator.
But that's not necessarily a quality of life that people, that's to make sure that you have food. You know, I mean, that, that's a little different, a lot of generators are, are used to that, that's what I use my generator. Um, we, you know, we talked about a lot in the March meeting, about looking where a lift goes, seeing where places, um, where around the house it could go. Um, if you couldn't find a place, put it in the setback, and again, I think that, when he said that, um, the town attorney or John said that was tough language to put in there, with, to describe. I think that is exactly what the Board of Adjustment is for, it's for special variances, it's for, if you really need something, you know, I, I take offense when I see people in, you know, making insinuation that the people that don't wanna lift in the setback, well, they just don't want people with disabilities to get into their house, or people that are elderly get in their house. Moved here when I was three years old, I'm not, I've not been here as long as Ms. Collins, Ms. Brunges, obviously, I haven't been here as long as someone's gone, but my parents were older too. And, um, I know that at some point, they may need some sort of lift or something like that. And if they can't put it, you know, somewhere else and have to put it in the setback, that's what you, you go to the Board of Adjustment for and ask them to approve that. Um, to give carte blanche, allow things into the setbacks, allow all these things that we're thinking of putting, whether it's an eight-foot shower, whether it's a lift in the setback, you're opening up the fact, and, and I think, Neil, you actually said last time, when I asked you, what makes you, why can't you just put anything in the thirty-foot setback, and you look back and you're like, I don't know, why can't you put anything in the thirty-foot setback? And to me, there's a reason why we have those setbacks, so we don't build stuff right on top of each other. And if you, if there's a need to put something in there, um, that is going to affect the ability for you to get into your house, to use your house, that's what the Board of Adjustment is for, to have carte blanche, put whatever you want in the setback, which is basically what we're opening up the door for, just.
Well, you know, it's been the Board of Adjust, probably the best.
And it is, yes, but I don't, but I don't, what I don't wanna do is say, you know, you have thirty feet, you can do whatever you want with it. And that's, that's not what it's for.
Thanks.
Well, that's what we talked about last time, and, and what we're doing showers and we're doing. Well, that's what we talked about last time, and, and when we're doing showers and we're doing lifts, you know, what's the next thing that we can put in the setbacks? So.
What would you say would be something else that would be offensive?
I don't. I don't know, just, just because this issue has come, obviously within last year. You know, let's just say next year, something, someone else wants something else to go into the setback. If they want it, go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for it, but I don't think we should adopt our code to make. You can do whatever you want in that thirty foot, a- and that's what, that's where I think this potentially could be leading, and that's where I'm coming from. I'm certainly understand that if someone needs to get that access onto it, and I think there's ways built into. Into our code, whether it be going to the Board of Adjustment, um, or looking at somewhere else, um, that, that may not be quite as convenient. Um, as being in the setback, but at the same point, that's kind of what the setbacks are for.
And, and showers, people, I see them around the beach and they're, they're not in setbacks. They're under the steps, under the porch, I mean, I have one next door to me and I have two in my block, they're like that. You, you don't have to put it in a setback. It's nice, you know, if you can.
But if it's written, that's where.
If it's, and, and once you do this, it's gonna be.
My old house.
Then every single house, every single house will be able to put a shower in the setback and a lift. Okay, you can't separate it. And we would be allowing.
So not for new, new construction. Like I said, in my old house, I would not, Leanne, would you be able to put a lift at your house? I thought about that the other day.
Well, you know.
Where would you put a lift to your house?
Well, depends on the church, the church fences, so I'd probably have to come up through my porch.
You would, wouldn't you?
Mm-hmm, just take off and end of the porch.
There's no room out front and no room on the side, really.
No, cuz my side's got a fence.
I, I understand, but that's not the most convenient place to put a lift. Correct, and I'm, I'm just saying, we're just using.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want it in my setback cuz it wouldn't be convenient to my porch, it'd be for me, it'd be easier just to cut off a piece of porch. And put it in there.
But I think to David's point, that's what the Board of Adjustments is for, and so they would realize when they came out and looked at your situation. That you have no other place to put it, so it would need to go in the setback.
Right, you know, but I would just say, let's just insert it in the porch, just take a section. No, no, not really, no, cuz I have either the end of the front porch. Or it could be in the back, there's one section in the back it could go, so yes, I would have somewhere else to put it. Because my neighbors could throw a fit if I slapped something up there, you know.
We just send the recommendation, so. Yeah, so does anyone?
Tony had more to say?
Um, no, I was just gonna ask if anybody had any other questions for Tony. Cuz I think we can kinda beat this to death and with each other, so, okay.
I have one quick question, how are we to vote on this?
I, I think what, this is my recommendation is if the ad hoc committee, we have an ordinance twenty twenty three, eighteen forty three. I think you take a uh, a vote on that, favorable, unfavorable. And then I think uh, whatever, that would go to the Board of All of them. And I would think that the planning board would take another vote on changes to that, what changes, recommended changes.
So we take what they did, yay or nay, and then we, if.
Make modifications to it, and then we send both of those to the Board of All.
The March, we did line item by line.
So, um, no, any, any other? Any other questions for Tony? Okay, I wanna open the public portion of the meeting. Do you have anybody that wants to? Speak? No? Okay. So, close the public portion and um, we'll move on to what Tony said, either. Um, does anybody want to?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we vote for ordinance, we vote on ordinance, it's twenty twenty three. Oh, eighteen forty, twenty twenty three, eighteen forty three.
Well, it's twenty twenty three, eighteen forty three.
Okay, so I'm gonna vote to, um, so am I gonna put my vote in for favorable or unfavorable? Okay, so I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna make a motion that we, we set an unfavorable, unfavorable vote for ordinance twenty twenty three, eighteen forty three.
Does anybody? I'll second it.
You.
If we're gonna, we're gonna.
We're gonna, we're sending it, not, not, well, I said unfavorable. And then we're gonna come back and we're gonna make our recommendations.
Okay, that's clear.
Okay, so. A motion, Cheryl. And all in favor of an unfavorable recommendation for ordinance twenty twenty three, eighteen forty three? Say.
Then I will make a, so do I need to make a motion?
Whatever recommendations y'all want to make to ordinance twenty twenty three.
Do I make to make that as a motion?
Yes.
And so, I will make a motion that we make some recommendations for ordinance eighteen forty three. Um, to be discussed amongst us now, or?
Yeah, whatever.
We can go down like we did last time.
I'll make a motion that we um. Pick which one, I guess, what we would like to send to the Board of All.
My understanding is we want to remove the eight by four showers, do we want to remove showers altogether? Before we remove them, or we can compromise and something, bring the size down.
I think you would first, um. Remove it all together, and then, then you can see how many people you have in favor of that, and then you can vote. Then the next step with the showers.
You would make, you would make whatever you want to do.
Um, personally, I mean, we could, I'm not opposed to showers, I'm opposed to an eight by four shower. So my reckon, my motion would be that, that one of the recommendations would be, we change the wording about more showers to four by four. You know, as opposed to eight by four. Um, cuz people, people got showers. So, that would be one, if anybody would like.
But can we, if that doesn't get seconded, can another motion be made? I'd like to hear your motion.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, we need to vote what she's asked.
No, she needs a second to vote, if we don't second it, we can hear.
Yeah, I would think, right, Tony? Well, we're not, we're just gonna do the ones that came up, like the lifts. The, the, the shower, you know, we, we either wanna.
Didn't y'all discuss that in the March meeting already? So, okay. I'm just, I'm just raising the question.
We can just take the eight by four out altogether, just showers, eight by four, just take the whole thing out.
If y'all voted in March, according to the minutes.
There's not a second, so there's nothing to vote on.
They're saying that you don't need a second.
Can you clarify what the motion was?
Unless you, would you, if you prefer that we go back to how we did in March, no shower, take the eight by four, take that out altogether. Would that be easier? I make a motion that we remove um. Under number four, B. That's my motion, section, uh, number four, section B, section four, letter B. The size of shower should not exceed four. Feet by eight, and the shower will be constructed so that it does not approach more than four feet to any required setback, I make a motion that gets removed.
So, you're, you're taking away the four by four and just making a motion to remove it altogether. Okay.
But she's accepting shower, outdoor showers.
Okay, we, does that open it up?
Does accepting outdoor showers mean?
She's accepting for with the change of the size.
I'm taking out the size. Well, see, originally in March, we, we voted no shower, it's, you know, I mean, we can't do that though, because people have showers, they, people, we were saying.
You can do that, you did it in March, you can take it out. Y'all voted.
Cannot put an outdoor shower.
Not in a setback.
Not in a setback, okay.
We took out all of it.
If y'all, if you don't, I'd like to just make a motion real quick.
No, yeah, I'll withdraw my motion, I know what I'm saying.
No, I see what you're saying, you want, you're worried about size.
I'm worried about size, I'm worried about it being in the setback.
So, my motion would be to forward um, to the Almen. Um, ordinance eighteen forty three, twenty two thousand twenty three, and remove paragraph five four, and then remove paragraph five. Which would be showers in the lifts.
So we're removing. Number four and complete the number five.
Hey man, why are we the, why are we putting five in there? Why are we taking the left side of there, I thought we. We're taking this side of the.
Um, I think that there's an appropriate process.
Which is what we did as well. It's just that, so you're gonna leave E alone.
So, what I'm doing is I'm based on the um, ordinance that was drawn up. And the one that has been forwarded, I guess, to the Almen.
Perfect, okay. Just taking out four and five.
Take all four and all, all four which address the showers, and all of five which address the lifts out. When I would be okay with. The remaining paradise.
Are those the only recommendations we have for all of this? That's it? Any hour, okay with the arbers?
Did you cover the point about the utility, uh, the staircase?
Okay, I'm seconding David's motion. So we're leaving four and five.
Okay, all in. All in favor of David's motion to remove four and five?
But I'll take both of the recommendations which are the Board of All of them.
Okay, well, we said they're stairs, some said they're upstairs.
Stairs are, that's something David wanted G is still in there, those stairs are allowed.
So, we will move on through in agenda item B.
Robert's gonna be doing this. And this is something that needs to be forward to the Board of All of them at the, our next meeting, so. We need to act on this tonight, we have a, a couple of things going on that we need to address. Uh, Robert is gonna be uh, doing this.
Looks so different.
Town chair, members of the planning board, uh, on June sixteen, twenty twenty three. The town attorney uh, provided staff with an updated minimum of housing code, chapter one fifth. What this text amendment does is it updates uh, the language from our old chapter one fifty two. Uh, which had language from one sixty A to the current state statute one sixty D. We probably should have done this last year when we adopted the U D O. Um, in a lot of cases, the minimum housing code is included in land use code uh, in our ordinance, it is not. So it was just missed, I suppose, uh, so in this case, um. All municipalities in North Carolina have to re-adopt their ordinance to be congruent with one sixty D. Uh, or the ordinance is irrelevant and you have to follow the sixty D anyway. Uh, so you can see that there are some language changes in chapter one fifty two. And with one, with chapter ninety seven, the reason why that is a separate piece. Is because when we were looking at chapter one fifty two of our ordinance. We didn't think that it made sense in one fifty two that uh. Houses as a nuisance should fall under chapter ninety seven, which is nuisances enumerated, where we define what a nuisance as far as property is concerned. Um, I believe that our old uh, property as a nuisance ordinance probably was not enforceable. This sort of defines or sets criteria for making the ordinance um, more enforceable. Anyway, the request is for you to consider the proposed changes to the town's minimum, minimum housing code. Chapter one fifty two and amendment chapter ninety seven, provided in your strike through underline uh, format. Uh, we don't have an ordinance version of it, it was given to us short notice, like I said, it was about three weeks ago when we received it, and then we had to look at it and. Understand it and then come up with a memo and then send it out to you in pretty short order. Um, staff's recommendation is that the planning board pass a favorable recommendation. Uh, for the chan- uh, for the changes in chapter one fifty two and chapter ninety seven. Um, legal notice was posted in the Williamson Star News on May twenty third, twenty twenty three. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, or at least attempt to, and if I fail, then I will definitely call.
And, and I don't know if you want to add us a question, but I read it. And um, the majority of it, it asked him to, and there's three places that need some of the um, grammar. And say, would you like for me to give you guys?
Sure, absolutely. For the record, I did not write this, so.
See where it came from, but. Um, at the bottom of the residential occupancy. Buildings in which. And which families were admitted, you should, you should just omit families, buildings in which a person or persons. Live which in there.
Okay, and omit a family?
Yeah, omit family, it's already struck out, but just leave which in.
Okay, leave which in.
And then probably other, wouldn't you? Or persons live or live in?
A person or persons is in there.
Okay, or persons.
Instead of eliminating which and families, just. Okay, and then the next one is on page seventy three. And it is one fifty two, one fifty seven at the top. As provided by G S, okay, and you've got all that red struck out. And where it starts in the middle, and it says such lane shall be. And all that is struck out, I guess, such lane shall be filed. Having the same. Priority. Instead of filed, have the same. And then the other one is on, is that, is that okay? Other one's on page sixty seven. Um, page sixty seven, and where it says um, Superior Court of Brunswick County in the middle, just put New Hanover County.
We don't wanna take our business from the county?
That tells me where you got, doesn't it? That was all that I found, someone else may have seen.
Yeah, and that's actually listed twice in that paragraph, in the middle and.
Yeah, it's in that paragraph. Yeah, it's in that paragraph. And then, um, the rest of the document was. Such that I would not really be able to change it or make it better because that's not what I do.
Is the town attorney the one that it kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
Something that is intentionally in there. Um, page sixty-four, it says designation of unsafe buildings.
Yeah, I looked it down.
It says every building that shall appear to be inspected. But, and again, that may be there for a reason because then you go into your hearing and then there can be a determination made. And I don't know if that's, but would it be better if you put every building the inspector determines? Um, again, I don't know if that's, if that language is there specifically, um. So a determination has not been made until a hearing, but.
Instead of all the words.
But again, it, it, there may be a reason.
Right, I'll, I'll make a note of it and then I'll send it back to. Get this comments back.
Just do every building that appears to the inspector to be especially dangerous to life and just take out the. That shall, yeah, it's, it's very word.
I took out appears and said basically every building the inspector determines to be especially dangerous. No, I don't know. Can't make the determination until after hearing, so that may be the reason why, that's right.
Anyone else seeing anything you had a question about or concern about?
Yeah, I do, um. I wanted to understand, uh, since it's such a large document, I kinda got lost from some of the stuff up front where you have the definitions. Of deteriorated and dilapidated and it talks about fifty percent. And I'm trying to understand. How does that get measured? And that covered in here because it wasn't clear to me if, you know, it goes on, you know, trying to define different stuff. As far as, you know, what's, uh, which can have cracks and walls and holes and stuff. So is that the method?
Um, well, generally the method is an estimated cost of, uh. The men- estimated cost of repairs versus the tax assessed value on the Hannover County's website.
Yes, that's versus the estimated tax time. That's right.
Unless the owner provides us with a, an actual appraisal by a certified appraiser and then we would. We would consider that as opposed to the tax assessed value. So that, that fifty percent rule falls under substantial, uh, im- improvement slash substantial repairs. I think the old one said sixty percent, but, but, but pretty standard, uh, law is substantial is defined as fifty percent. Which is why it was changed.
The, uh, on page thirty-eight, it talks about extermination, um, or controlling insects and rodents and, uh. The recent issues with pigeons and the piers. Are those kinds of things covered in this or is that a separate?
I don't, I don't think so, Neil. I think that's completely separate.
But then is it covered elsewhere or is something that's not covered?
It's probably not covered or, oh, no, the state law maybe covers it or whatever, about any pigeons or anything like that.
Uh, it's, it's, uh.
Which one is that?
Uh, thought was that it's. It's a health issue.
I mean, it just burns from everywhere, um. It's, uh, not their natural habitat, but they seem to like it and, uh, I just. The real question is, is there another place in our ordinances where it is dealt with? And if not, then, you know, maybe that's something that needs to be considered. It's not covered by this.
We can noted, uh, I mean, bring it up and then the Board of Alderman directs us to look into. Um, perhaps writing a text amendment, uh, for it. But I, I don't think that that was considered, uh, in this.
So would you suggest that pigeons or be included as rodents?
Well, I'm. Form of species oriented thing, but it's certainly the past.
Well, how about page forty-six? It says every occupant of a single dwelling in every owner of a building containing two or more dwellings. Is responsible. So would the town not be responsible for? The extermination of insects, rodents, or other pests within the building premises? Did that not address it?
That was my question. Is it addressed somehow otherwise than in in?
Well, that's what I'm asking. It, does it address it in page forty-six?
I mean, when I read this, I read it. It was more residential. And that's why I wondered.
I think this is more residential.
And it does.
Oh, and D on page forty-six.
Because certainly commercial entities, especially restaurants, uh, you know, they'll have to have sort of, some sort of treatment of rodents and everything, but.
Residential and once it becomes a new subject. You know, and then of course it would end up being complaint driven, I mean.
Crazy.
Another thing that, uh.
Right.
This, this is super heavy.
But again, I think you're, you're right, but I also think what he said is a point. So instead of having to go house to house. It gets him the authority once you get.
Right, because.
To keep you from, I mean, to, they have to hire somebody and just be what you see.
Right, I mean, because in the past, I mean. The only way to gain access, uh, for something that was like egregious would be for, um, one of those, uh. Uh, administrator.
At the worst case administrator.
That's the worst case scenario, but I mean, here we can at least request an inspect.
Also in there it said, it gave Tane as an example on the end of. Uh, Raleigh Street, that big old house man, that it doesn't have to just be. Trash and so forth. If you see something that's not legal. That you can go in also. I, I mean, that, I've forgotten how it was stated, but, you know, it's not only a house that's. Got garbage and so forth. It's if there's something that's not. Legal in the situation. But you can also.
It would give you cause.
Yes.
Was there anything else that anyone noted or saw?
I have a couple of other points I'd like to clarify. Uh, it's true to the thought and the definition of family, but it's not really relevant in that, but. I, I go back to discussions I had with, uh, Chief Howe. About some rental properties where they were just as many kids as they could get. And. It doesn't really talk about, um. The, uh, number of residents at all, but. And it doesn't necessarily go hand in hand with a. Dilapidated building. But it certainly goes to the issue of it's overstuffed with people who are unrelated. And I remember the chief saying something, well, so many people who are unrelated can't. I, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand, is there any crossover between this is trying to accomplish and the people that actually live there?
No, I don't think that's being addressed at all. And what you're talking about, I don't know if it could even be enforced.
Yeah, that was always my question, which is why they don't do it in building today.
So this is not addressing the number of people in the rental.
That would be a long of those things, right?
Maybe something with the county, not just this. We just need to make them.
The number of people in it.
They're, they're for sure.
Maybe it's not there anymore.
You, I know for sure that there used to be one, but like Tony was saying, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of that whatsoever. You're gonna enforce. I know a lot of them all over the state have just sort of gone away because. It makes a statement, but we won't actually do anything about it.
Like on page fifty-five, it talks about registration permits inspections, um. Does that take place?
No, are you talking about for rentals?
Rooming houses and units compliance required, registration permits inspections. It's. One fifty-two, four oh seven, five oh seven, six.
Right, if that is in reference to rental properties, we don't actually do that currently. But in the state of North Carolina. The way there is a legal theory that. For regulating short-term rentals, and I'm not saying that that's what this is. I'm just saying, just from my knowledge, that, um. You can require inspections if a town chooses to go that route. Um, you can require safety inspections or like, you know, the non-emergency police numbers posted above the phone for short-term rentals or rental properties in general because. It's just understood in small communities that some of these properties will be rented to people who are not familiar with who to call if something happens. Um, so that may be just something that was taken from a model ordinance and included in ours. Um, that gives us the ability to say, hey, you have to post the police. Front desk number instead of nine-one-one above the telephone number so that if there's a minor complaint, you can call the front desk as opposed to dialing nine-one-one. You know, I mean, things like that. I mean, that's, that's all I can imagine that that would actually.
This is a placeholder considering future.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, a lot of these languages from model ordinances are. Were are placeholders for the future, even though we don't require them. We don't require any businesses or regulate rentals in any way. Um, you know, there is language in there that, you know, potentially if there's a problem, we could say something about it.
I know we talked about it, uh, before, uh, the meeting, Tony and, and Robert, you were looking at it as well, but, uh, you know, like on page fifty-seven, it starts to talk about. Um, things east and west, building lines and leftovers and stuff. And then you're using the, the terms of a model ordinance, uh, so. We don't allow them.
Right, are, we, we don't allow beach walkovers. Currently, like there are no new ones being built.
So why would this kind of stuff appear in here? Take that out.
We, we may bring it to Brian's attention. He did remove it in some, uh, this could be a section that we need to take out also.
I'll ask if I'll get it too.
What page is that on? Okay, well, thank you.
That walkways. One fifty-two point ninety.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight, I got it noted. So under one fifty-two point one one nine shoreline protection officers. Uh, it didn't indicate the ranger was one of the, that group and is, is there a reason for that or it's just a missing thing or?
I mean, that would definitely be. That would definitely be the rangers.
We could see if we can, if we wanted to have those.
I ran out of scheme after that. Appreciate your indulgence.
One five two point one one nine.
Adding it where? Under the B, the?
Under shore protection.
Shoreline protection. Okay, perfect.
And just to be clear, I want to make sure that I'm clear that this has nothing to do with short-term rentals or regulating rentals at all.
I never gathered that. Yeah. Okay, so, um. Any other questions for Robert?
Yes, well, we, back here in the, um, was it seventieth file? Public nuisancy.
Is that part of this?
It's part of the same text amendment. Uh, like I was saying, originally that section that we added was in chapter one fifty-two. We didn't think that it made sense in one fifty-two, so we stuck it at the end of ninety-seven just because it, it, well, it fell under the nuisance category. That's why it was, it was moved from one fifty-two to ninety-seven, but it was originally part of the text.
So what is it named?
It is, it is just what you see there.
Part of the text.
It is part of chapter ninety-seven.
It's its standalone.
Exactly. It, it's just tacked on to the, yeah, it's, it's tacked on to the end of chapter ninety-seven.
So item A on ninety seventy-six. I just want to be clear that it isn't just a vacant lot, but. And it doesn't have to be a, uh, a lot that's occupied. It could be, you know, dwelling.
Right, okay.
Where's this?
Talk about vacant lot, vacant lot is, it's just a lot, it's not.
That covers it.
It could just be overgrown with. You know. And it's like a vacant lot, basically just undeveloped with no structure on it.
If, if that. If, if you have that kind of situation, who would you, who would you contact?
It would be, I mean, it would be us. I mean, cause what would happen is. Me and Tony. Right, so.
Public works gets involved sometimes.
Right, yeah, sometimes public works will get involved and we would just, we would point out that. The property is considered a nuisance, send them a notice of violation, ask them to please address it. And then if they don't address it, then we send them, you know, a civil citation, fifty dollars a day until it's fixed, but we give them ample time, you know, I mean, usually I give them like. In my letters, I, I usually give them like two, two to three weeks to address it.
Jungle was raccoons and.
It could be an issue, yeah.
Could be an issue.
Any other questions for Robert?
I said most snakes are good then.
I have one quick question that it talks about any missing deck porch railing. Now, do y'all get into the docks that are KMA governed? Or is that completely different? You don't address, okay.
But us, we do have something, uh, we build unsafe piers and docks.
Okay, okay. I thought it was separate, making sure.
Thirteen, on page seventy-six, the placement of the P D upon the services of public or private property. So like the mailbox and things like that, is it?
Yeah, that's complaint problem.
Yeah.
It's pretty good, I mean.
I love the, um. Kind of abandoned houses. There's a problem already on Wayne.
You know, it's good.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
That we approve.
Well, actually, we didn't open the public portion. So we'll open the public portion if anyone has any comments. Regarding, um. The updated chapter one fifty-two. Nope, okay, so we'll close the public portion and.
I would like to make a motion that we approve. Chapter one fifty-two. To conform to North Carolina general statutes, one sixty-D dash twelve oh one F twelve, twelve and one sixty-D. Dash one nineteen dash eleven, one, eleven nineteen dash eleven thirty. And the section ninety-seven addressing noise in public nuisance.
A second. With the small changes.
Yeah, with those. Yes.
Graham.
I'll second.
All in favor? So that's unanimous. Thank you, Robert. So.
He looked like.
And his beard.
Very mature.
And, um, so we'll move on to old business. Anyone have any old business they want to bring up? No?
There's all. There's in. Under old business, is that anything that we have voted on or we'd like to ask progress? What's going on with the Bevy Mart? There's three walls.
There, um. That's a massive, uh, day in the, their blood group that's built, so that's. That's something that's takes a lot of time, probably material shortages.
Did we know it was gonna get down and that down to, to nothing but three walls?
We did, we did. And it, it's the reason why they're doing that because FEMA required them to. Do that, so it's pretty expensive, so.
Beyond them, are they still able to do it?
It's costing them money, I'm sure.
Yeah, I ran into Kelly over the weekend down South Carolina. She said they were open in August.
Of next year? Next, next year, twenty twenty-four.
I was like, I didn't say anything, I just sat there. So, I was, I was kind of wondering what was going on with that.
How about, how's it going down there in the restaurant?
They, they started. Started their first phase with the outside, they cleaned it up, it looked really good. So, they, that's the first phase, and then they'll go inside of the building.
Restaurant back up. They hadn't started the apartment yet.
Just, no, that's their next phase inside.
It's clean enough down there between that and parking lot, beside Neptune's and the bench and, you know, slowly but surely.
I think Neptune's really looks great.
Yeah, they fixed up the parking lot in the corner.
I mean, the inside of the restaurant looks fabulous. Um, okay, any other old business? Other business?
Um, I got one more thing about is reddicks, did they withdraw their application? What do we have on the forefront?
We don't, we don't have anything.
I got a request for a resounding application, but I don't even know what it's, it works or not. It won't, it for sure won't be in the next two months.
Okay.
I have one question, sorry, did all these things clear my head? The Marina Restaurant. I saw a picture they posted on social media.
Need a floating restaurant.
The floating restaurant, what does that say?
Floating restaurant.
That's, that's under construction down by the pier somewhere.
It's in Brunswick County, the bar to came from Florida. County, Brunswick County is involved, New Hanover County, and now the town office will be.
So, who's keeping an eye on what we, what our thing was, like the third floor, that kind of thing, who's keeping an eye on that?
Myself and Robert, and the town manager, we sent them the the S U P, so it's being constructed in Brunswick County. It'll be floated down here when it's about ninety-something percent complete.
Oh, because it looked like it was being done right down here on down.
Across the bridge, they, that's in Brunswick County.
Okay. Okay, so, but that is being.
Thanks for getting these out, it's very helpful.
So much easier.
Atlantic Marine, yeah, you know, they, one of the parking changes, have they installed additional stacks?
No, I haven't seen anything. No, I think that's just for future, maybe, you know, year.
Yeah, it was to keep his.
Yeah, it just keeps the dog, and so, nothing's been done.
Any other business? And stuff? We're missing. Go wait. I mean, we wait, yeah. Has building slowed down at all?
Yeah, it has.
We, we have fever.
Out of dirt for starters, but, you know. I keep hearing about the, the, the draw.
It, it has.
Okay. Okay, Leanne made a motion to adjourn, anyone want a second?
I'll take it.
Yeah.
All in favor to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
Is your mama here with you?
Yeah.
How long does she?
It's, um, yeah, my son just. It's pretty advanced, so my son and my husband earlier went.